Good evening. Welcome back to the new school year. We have a huge group joining us, so this is fabulous to see. I'm going to call to order the meeting of September fourteenth, 2016. Our first item of business is we're going to do the Pledge of Lienence. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you. I think the next item we have are items for approval. We've got a long list, so bear with us. We'll try to get through it as quickly and painlessly as possible. And I try to group them by who can vote on what. So I think the first thing we will go with is the approval of minutes from June twenty-seventh, regular session. Can I take a motion to approve Mr. Tal? Oh, oh. I'll see if he was the second.
I'll say something.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Yes. Was the twenty-seventh a session that allowed us to go into executive session? And so in fact are these executive session minutes that we are voting on?
These are regular.
Regular session, yeah. We didn't do...
I thought we met on Monday evening in order to... And I may be wrong. I thought the last meeting, and I couldn't, can't remember what was that. It was a Monday, I think.
It's in these meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
You went into executive session, but the execu... These meetings are the regular session.
It was excluded. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Kane. Okay, we have an approval of an out-of-state field trip for New York City, November fourth, for the high school. I'll just make note, this is separate from the eighth grade middle school field trip. Two different trips, for any confusion. There is documentation in here on that. Can I get a motion to approve? Mrs. Bonnich? Mr. Mullis? Second. All those in favor? Looking right through that. Okay. And I think the next set of warrants... We've got warrants G four-two-seven, G four-hundred, G four-oh-one, R two-two-six, R two-two-seven, R two-two-eight, R two-two-nine, R two-hundred, R two-oh-one, and then L-oh-one, L-oh-two, L-oh-three, L-oh-four, L-oh-five. Can I get a motion to approve? Mr. Buork, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? We've got warrant CB seventeen, sped twenty-seven, sped twenty-eight, sped twenty-nine, sped thirty, sped oh-one. I think that's everybody except for one. Can I get a motion to approve those warrants, please? Mr. Mullis? Mrs. Bonnich? Second. All those in favor? One abstain, uh, two abstain. Mr. Buork and Mrs. Burns. And then warrants FS twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, oh-one, oh-two, oh-three. Question? Take a... Get them? Okay. Carrie Ford, oh-one. Carrie Ford, oh-two. Motion to approve? Mrs. Burns? Second. Mrs. Bonnich? All those in favor? Great. I think we got through those. And student representative?
So I have news to report. We had hoped that Dina would be rejoining us as student representative, being the entrepreneurial, hard-working person she is. She actually has a job that's going to prevent her from being the student rep this year, but Ms. Peters is looking for a replacement for Dina. So we don't have somebody for this...
What are they paying? Maybe we can...
Well, Dina will be missed for sure. We really appreciated her reports and her quotes, her inspirational weekly quotes, so... But good for her that she got a job, so give the kid credit. Okay. Next item, superintendent's report, please.
Yes, I just have a few updates for the committee. I wanted to start by telling you that last year, if you, you might recall, that during the capital project, capital planning project and budget process, we learned that there was a plan to replace the roof at the Beltwell School and also a portion of the roof at the North School. They went to bid the projects earlier in the spring, and unfortunately, there was a bid protest that held up the process. And as a result, they were not able to complete the process in time to do those roof projects over the summer. So their plan right now is to regroup and to have those bid documents all ready to go in the late winter, early spring, have the bidding all completed, and be ready to go right after school ends in June this year and have those done. So that work will not get completed this year, so we just wanted to make the committee aware of that. Any issues that come up in the roof, uh, with either of those roofs, obviously, the Department of Public Buildings will, will address as needed. Also, we had had some concerns raised by Mrs. Kane regarding the parking lot and what seemed to be some continued confusion around the traffic flow. So over the last couple of weeks, our thanks to the Public Works Department, so about four additional signs were added to the parking lot to help with traffic flow. So we're hoping that that will eliminate the confusion and allow people to flow freely through there without getting into position. I think what was happening were people, people didn't know when, where to turn into the parking area, would try to back up, or they would try to take a left where they were supposed to go straight or to the right. So we've labeled that, and hopefully that will take care of that. Also wanted to let folks know that our Office of Instructional Technology, and you'll meet our new director a little bit later in the agenda, but we have made a little bit of a move, and we've moved the staff from the Office of Instructional Technology from the basement of the West Intermediate School to here at the high school. There were several offices available off the Library and Media Center. That also allows the technology staff to better support the high school, particularly in light of the amount of technology that's in this new building, as well as the rollout of our one-to-one initiative with the Chromebooks. So they're in a position to provide great support, and they have beautiful office spaces, and they're integrating nicely with the Library and Media staff as well here at the high school. And I think the only other thing I wanted to raise was that MCAS two-point-oh, as you may know, that the state did award the contract for the development of what we have come to know as MCAS two-point-oh. That was awarded to Measured Progress, who is currently the state vendor for the MCAS, the current MCAS. There will be more and more information rolling out as the year goes on, but the one thing that we do know is that the state is requiring that we administer the test as a computer-based test in grades four and grades eight. We have the option in the other grades of whether to do computer-based testing. So we will be having conversations with the leadership team over the next several weeks. We have to notify the state by October, by mid-October, essentially, if we're going to, what we're going to do with respect to grades three, five, six, and seven. I think for the most part, our staff are up for giving computer-based tests in as many of the grades as the technology will allow us. I think our discussions about paper-based are focused more on the third grade and their abilities in that area. I think it's advantageous to us where it is a hold harmless year to perhaps use that as an opportunity to really get into the computer-based testing with our students. So more to come, and we'll share that information as it comes out, but those are the updates for this evening.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Tal?
I have another question. In regards to the roof repairs for the Beltwell, what was the other school?
The North.
The North.
Intermediate.
Considering the capital investments that they're looking to do with those schools switching around and maybe possibly demoing maybe the Beltwell because of the size of it, I mean, would it be a good idea to put a brand-new roof on there and then demolish it a year later?
The, right now, the Facility Master Plan study is, you know, it's not going to be completed until May, and then it'll be presented. At that point, it will be up to the community and the town manager with respect to what the priorities are and the pacing, if you will, of the projects, what may get done when, and there still would need to be a community vote, a town meeting vote, as to what projects would be funded and what projects wouldn't be funded. The study just basically says, here are some options, and here's what they cost, and then it's up to the community to decide how to prioritize those projects and which projects the community wants to fund. So we are, I would say, a long way from any decisions about what to do with any of the buildings, but in the meantime, the roof at the Beltwell in particular has had some significant issues. They've been doing a great job of patching and repairing, but water, you know, Mrs. Mahan is here, and Mrs. Walsh is here as well, having formerly run the school, and now Kristen being at the school, has had some significant roof leaks, particularly in sensitive areas like the cafeteria, not the cafeteria, but the food prep area. So I think it is still worth that investment, knowing that we may be in that school for a number of years to come before any decisions are made.
Any other questions or comments on the superintendent report? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. I don't believe we had any old business to carry over, so we'll move on to new business. And we've got a cool thing to do next. New staff introductions. We've got a good list.
Yes, we do. I think what I will do is I'm going to take them in order by school, starting with the Beltwell and then moving through our schools. So Mrs. Walsh, you have the honor of coming up first, and Mrs. Walsh will introduce the new staff from the Beltwell Early Childhood Center.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Tonight, I'd like to introduce two new staff members to our Beltwell team. The first new staff member is Heather Anderson. She comes to us from the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, where she was an educational assistant last year. She's a graduate of Wheelock College, and she is also a busy model for children. So we're very excited to have her on our team.
Thank you very much.
And the next member of our team is Ms. Megan Messina. She is a graduate of Bridgewater State University. She has been a long-term substitute both in the grade four at the North and grade one at the Woburn Street. This, she does not have any children yet, but this summer, she did have the joy of traveling to Europe for a few weeks with her family, so welcome.
Thank you.
Wildwood Early Childhood Center, we, does have a new teacher, Deanna England. She actually is not new to the school district. She actually was a long-term sub at the Wildwood last year. She was not able to be here, so Charlotte Phillips, who is the early childhood director of the Wildwood, is not here either, but Deanna, we're happy that she is now permanently employed as a kindergarten teacher at the Wildwood School. So next, I would like to welcome Mrs. King from the Shawshine Elementary School to introduce her staff.
I'm happy to welcome Lisa Gibbs, our new adjustment counselor. Lisa comes from Newburyport, where she was a counselor for four years, and she brings with her responsive classroom training and social thinking curriculum, and we're really excited to have her. She brought her daughter here also today. Nice to have you. I also have two other new faculty members that weren't able to make it here tonight. Paula Bartolomia is our new behavior interventionist. She is a registered behavior interventionist. There's an actual certificate for that, and she worked in SEEM Collaborative and also in a public school as a behavior aide. And I also would like to welcome, who's not here tonight, is Katie Peters, who is our new school nurse, and she comes from us from Burlington. She was a, did pediatric triage before becoming a school nurse, and she substituted a lot last year in other districts, and so we're happy to have her as well.
Thank you. We have no new staff this year at the Woburn Street Elementary School, no new professional staff at the Woburn Street Elementary School, so Mr. Straznik is not with us. Similarly, we have no new professional staff at the North Intermediate School, so Mrs. McMiniman is not here with us. But with us tonight is Mr. Shaw from the West Intermediate. Thank you.
I have two West members to introduce, and actually, I just want to introduce as well the ones from the West. I have Kaylee Mock, a new teacher. She's U N H and Leslie grad. She came to us from Newburyport Child School, and she's teaching at the West, and she's doing a great job of it, so Kaylee, welcome. We have Lisa Hannigan. She's a new school nurse. She is a Lawrence Memorial Regis and Salem State grad. She also worked in Wakefield Public Schools and in home health care, and she also is just doing a fabulous job for us, so Lisa, welcome. Thank you. And district-wide, the house in my building is Alicia Sarafin. She's, she works with Sumit Thong with ESL. Alicia has a master of art in ESL from Salem State, an MBA from Bill Anderson School of Management. She comes to us from the Everett Public Schools. So love her. Sorry, I wasn't sure. I'll get you covered.
And next, I would like to invite Mrs. Girard to introduce the staff from the middle school.
So I just sent my final packet to Mr. Stolozzi, so we will have thirteen new full-time staff members with us at the middle school, actually fourteen. First, I want to introduce Ms. Jeanette Quirk. She is joining us in the role of assistant principal. She will be working with grades eight and seven challenger and seven discovery. Jeanette comes to us from Higgins Middle School, where she was a grade eight math teacher, where she taught grade eight math and algebra. She was the math department facilitator for grades six to eight, and also did the vertical alignment six to twelve, which was going to be really helpful for us. She got her master's in middle school math at Leslie. She got her CAGS in educational leadership from AIC, as well, she's a doctoral candidate in AIC, and her dissertation is Principles of Social Emotional Learning, which I think will be very helpful to us. With us today, I have Mary Beth Beluk. Mary Beth is teaching eighth grade math. She comes to us from Pollard Middle School in Needham, where she taught algebra, eighth grade math. She was on our tech, the tech committee there, as well as the one-to-one iPad pilot program, which also will be very helpful in the coming years. Next to her is Melanie Flaherty. Melanie is a Wilmington native. She's a 2016 grad from Assumption College. She did her student teaching at Wachusett High School. She got her degrees in history and secondary ed, also for Assumption. It was like a two-for-one deal, very exciting. Bethany Boyd. Bethany also did some student, uh, substitute teaching for us at the end of the year. She is teaching our sixth grade math strategies course. She did her student teaching at Forest Park Elementary, and she received her degrees in mathematics and elementary education. Next to Bethany is Sam Prindable. Some of you might know Sam. She did some work for us in the drama department for both the middle school and the high school, where she was the music director for, for some of the performances in previous years. She received her degree from Plymouth State Music Education. Previous to her coming to us, which we're very excited about, she was the girl director at Fawders Academy in New Hampshire, and she will be teaching sixth and seventh grade chorus, as well as sixth, seventh, and eighth grade general music. I think that's going to be here. All right, so then Lisa Brecher is our point-five school psychologist. She was a school psychologist for Situate Lexington Public Schools. She has actually come to us from nursery school program, because she took some time off to raise some, some of her children. Allison Capuano is our new life schools teacher. She was a transition specialist at Stonemont High School, and she was the director of the school to work program at E-Mark. Kirsty Foley is our eighth grade learning center teacher. She's a 2016 grad from Salve Regina, and she did her student teaching at Forest Park Elementary School in Rhode Island. Kate Lerner is our new French teacher. She is coming from Marblehead Community Charter School. Lori Nins is our new student support center teacher. She is coming from Spark Academy and Lawrence Public Schools, also worked in Salem, New Hampshire, and Methuen Public Schools as well, as well as St. Anne's in social emotional learning. Samantha O'Connor is our new strides autism classroom teacher, where she was the lead AVA therapist at the Shoba Valley, or the Shoba Learning Center. And Lindsay Schubert is our new tech ed teacher. She was previously the engineering teacher at Norwood High School. There we go.
I, I need a breath. And next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Peters to introduce the high school staff.
Hi, everybody. Hi. Well, we welcome ten new staff at Wilmington High School this year. Three of them are going to be with us tonight, so I'm going to introduce them for us. We have Jessica Bytawi. She's a special education teacher. She taught at, she got actually taught and coached in Tampa, Florida for six years. She earned a master's of science in athletic administration from Ohio University. She moved to Massachusetts in 2012 and taught in Worcester for four years, while working as an assistant coach for the women's basketball team at Anamalia College. Julie Kim. Julie is our curriculum team leader for science. She's teaching our AP Chem classes this year, and this is her seventeenth year teaching chemistry at the high school level. She previously taught at Salem High School and was also the science department lead teacher for ten years there. She has two children. Bruce, who is four and a half.
Broke your heart, her.
Or someplace else. And Jonathan Miranda. Jonathan is a new assistant principal at Wilmington High School, and he comes from twenty years of teaching experience at Everett Public Schools, and he taught English, and a master at scheduling. The people who couldn't be with us tonight are Robert Caraballo. He will be teaching biology and anatomy and physiology. Jeremy Salernos is teaching chemistry and physics. Jennifer Castanzos is teaching our special education department in the evolution program. Colleen Ingles will be teaching chorus and theater arts, and also eighth grade chorus at the middle school. Janet Maloney is also in our special education department. She'll be teaching in our language-based classroom. Sarah Paquette, joining our science department again after a year away, will be teaching biology. And Alessandra Negreeni, who is teaching three sections of Italian this year.
I'd now welcome Mrs. Mahan to introduce, our interim director of students' support services, to introduce the district staff in her department.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm excited to introduce to you Allison Brand, who is our coordinator for social and emotional behavioral health. We're going to shorten that a little, because it's a lot. But Alice comes to us from Lowell with an extensive background in mental health and school psychology. She has two boys who are in the sixth grade and the second grade, and we are delighted to have her, and she has hit the ground running and literally is running from place to place and really helping to support our students and staff. So welcome to Alice. I'm also pleased to like to introduce Gina Anderson. She is one of our district-wide team chairpeople. Gina comes to us from Gloucester Public Schools. She's responsible for chairing meetings at the Beltwell, the Shawshine, and the West, and filling in wherever necessary with some of our other students. And Gina just recently, last Friday, became a mother-in-law. So welcome Gina.
And finally, I'd like to introduce some of our district-level staff. I'd like to actually start behind you with Tristan Dixie, who is our new executive assistant to the superintendent. Tristan was most recently employed as assistant to the dean at UMass Lowell's College of Health Sciences. Before that, she was employed by Harvard University for over twelve years as an executive assistant, but also an area administrator and an associate director of administration for various departments at Harvard University. Tristan now lives with her husband in Tewksbury, Massachusetts, so she's also going to be our recording secretary as well. So welcome to Tristan. I'd like to introduce also Ken Storlazi, who is our new director of human resources. Ken, prior to joining us, was the director of human resources for Chelmsford Public Schools for three years, and director of HR for Sudbury Public Schools for seven years. He was also the HR assistant in Lexington Public Schools for seven years. As you can tell, he has a very, very strong background in K-12 HR, which we're very excited about. He has a bachelor of science in business administration from Emanuel College, and he lives in Concord, Massachusetts, with his wife and children. So welcome, Ken. Tim Alberts is our director of athletics, as well as nine-twelve health and physical education. He comes to us from Matnon High School, where he served as director of athletics and physical education for three years. Prior to that, he was director of admissions at the Jackson Walnut Park School in Newton, and assistant director of admissions and alumni relations for Boston College High School. He has been very actively involved in the MIAA for the past several years. He's also an adjunct professor in the master's program for athletic administration at Endicott College. He has a bachelor of science in business administration from Marquette, and a master's in educational and counseling psychology from the University of Missouri at Columbia. And Tim lives in Reading with his wife and little ones. Welcome.
Welcome.
And I would like to welcome Ann Marie Fiori, also our photographer for this evening, our, our director of instructional information technology. She also comes to us from Chelmsford Public Schools, where she served as director of technology and information for six years. Prior to that, she was director of technology for Greater Lawrence Technical School and a network administrator for Somerville Public Schools, but she began her career as a music educator, which might sound familiar to some of you, and Julie Kelly's followed a similar path. Mrs. Fiori has an impressive list of awards and accolades that she's earned, particularly in the area of creating personalized digital 21st century learning environments. She has a bachelor's degree in education from the Boston Conservatory and a master's in education from Cambridge College, and as if she's not busy enough, she's currently pursuing a doctoral degree in curriculum instruction from North Central University. She lives with her husband in Methuen, Massachusetts. And last but certainly not least, oh, yes. Mr. Sean Gallagher, who is now our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and staff development. Prior to joining us, Sean was the principal of Beverly High School for ten years, where he transformed the school from a traditional high school to a two 21st century center for learning. Prior to that, he was an assistant principal at Beverly High School, dean of students, and athletic director at Salem High School, and he started his career actually as a health educator. He was actually even a police officer for Salem PD for a year. He has an associate's in law enforcement from Dean College, a bachelor of science in health and physical education from Salem State, and a master's of education from Endicott College. He also is a graduate of the very prestigious National Institute of School Leadership Program, also known as NISL. And Sean lives in Salem with his two daughters, Sydney and Emma, and he is feeling the pain of our senior parents because he has a senior, Sydney is a senior, so she'll be graduating this year from Beverly High School. Welcome.
Great. Welcome. I feel like we need more cookies after that. It's a lot. Great. All right. Next item of business, we have three policies. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. All of our new staff, it's kind of our tradition, we, at school committee meetings, when you're invited in, we don't force you to stay for the whole thing, unless you really want to. We all know you have families and lives outside of your work, so feel free to head out and take cookies on your way. Thank you for joining us.
Nice to meet you all. Have a good year.
So now we'll move on to our next item of business. We have three first readings of policies, and it's policy IHAMB, alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. Policy JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, and policy JLCD, administering medicines to students. And these are first readings.
Correct. And these policies, the need for these policy revisions came as a result of the recent opioid legislation that was passed this past year. It had certain requirements in there around the providing and having a substance abuse prevention program and requirements with respect to our notification to students and parents about the substance abuse prevention program. That would be policy, the first and second policy. And similarly, but in a different section of that legislation, the need to update our policy with respect to the administration of Narcan by our school nurses, but also there are some provisions in there should we choose to exercise them, and we haven't not, we have not yet in the future, if we decide to train and allow non-medical staff to administer Narcan as well.
Mrs. Kane?
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
I noticed that in the policies, from what we had to what we have now, it seemed to me that we took away a number of specifics in just to make a more general policy. Am I misreading this, or I'm just wondering, what's the thought process behind doing that?
So the, really, all I did was use the MASC-recommended policies.
Okay.
Yeah.
There goes, okay. Yeah, and then this one that came up.
Mrs. Burns?
I had a, a question, if it was brought up at media, the subcommittee meeting with regards to the alcohol, tobacco, and drug used by students prohibited piece. Was there a clause in there pertaining to, or do you, was there just any discussion around adding unless prescribed by a medical physician? My point that I just kind of tripped over was the steroid piece. Some kids are on steroids for either asthma, sometimes poison IV. That would have to be administered by school personnel, but I, I just didn't know what the thoughts were before the subcommittee or superintendent would possibly adding that just to, I don't, I mean, I guess it's assumed, but I don't know, is it, is it safe to assume, or I guess was my concern. or I guess was my concern.
Yeah, I guess our position would be that if the student had a prescription for that, that it would be covered under the administration, administering medicines to students versus this particular one. I think this was contemplated as illicit use of steroids.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, discussion points? No? Okay, now, this is a first reading. So, as it's a first reading, we can move to accept the first reading on all three. Or if we want to take them up individually, is there any concern against taking them up as a group? No? Okay. I will ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Policy IHAMB, Policy JICH, Policy JLCD. And this is a first reading. Mrs. Bonnich. Mr. Mullis, second. All those in favor? Okay, great. You're unanimous, Tristan. Thank you. Okay, we can do that. Okay, we're going to take one item out of order here. We are going to go to Item I, the Discussion of the Resolution on 2016 ballot question number two, because I believe we have two people in our audience that might like to say a word or two, not to put you on the spot, but you are wearing your patches. Is there any concern in taking it out of order? No? Okay. Great. I can just pull it out myself.
Yeah, and just by way of background, the resolution that I shared with you is a resolution that you would find on the Massachusetts Teachers Association website. Neither MASC or MASSS actually drafted a resolution. They left that up to districts to decide in what, whether they were going to, obviously, how they were going to vote on that. But knowing, in the conversations with the Chair, the position of the committee, or the assumed position of the committee, I used as a baseline the MTA draft of a resolution.
Sure. Okay. Okay, for the record, I'll read it. Okay, and we, as committee members, have a copy in front of us, but I'll read it. "Resolution Against Lifting the Cap on Commonwealth Charter Schools. Whereas free public schools available to all students regardless of income, ability, need, or English language proficiency are found in," now I'm going to trip over it, "fundational to our democracy. And whereas all of our students deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child, providing enrichment and addressing social and emotional needs in addition to core academic subjects. And whereas local accountability for our public schools is necessary to ensure that schools are responsive to the needs of their communities. And whereas Wilmington Public School District is losing $80,686 to Commonwealth Charter Schools, and public school districts across the state are losing more than $450 million this year alone. A loss of funds that is undermining the ability of districts to provide all students with the educational services to which they are entitled. And whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools are often approved over the objections of a majority of community residents and their elected officials, and are not accountable to local elected officials once they are approved. And whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools often fail to serve the same proportion of special needs students, low-income students, and English language learners as the districts from which they receive students, and often use high suspension rates to drive out students they don't want to serve. And whereas the Commonwealth Charter School system is creating separate and unequal opportunities for success. And whereas lifting the cap on charter schools would greatly worsen the problems listed above and lead to a costly and divisive two-track school system. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wilmington School Committee opposes lifting the cap on Commonwealth Charter Schools." Discussion. Mrs. Burns?
Not that I have a lot to discuss. I'm for voting no on two. I think it speaks directly against free and appropriate education. I think with every budget year that we approach, the cost of educating our children effectively is always at risk. And I think charter schools do threaten that risk in order for us to support our students, and students of all diverse learning skills. So, I would strongly urge my colleagues in our community to consider voting no on two.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Kane?
I'd just say, I echo MJ's sentiment.
Okay, great. Mrs. Kane?
I just wanted to say that a few years ago, and I'm not sure anyone who's presently on the committee was on the committee at that time, but I went with our former superintendent to Andover, and she was very articulate. And they were going to put in a, kind of like a seam, it was going to be technology. And Andover being the type of community it is, you'd think they wouldn't have had a problem with it, but it got voted down. And people realized afterwards that it was not a positive thing for the community, it was a negative, it was going to be a negative. And so, nothing has changed. The charter schools, I'm a retired teacher, so I get, I'm privy to all the information from the MTA, and I go, oh, yes, this is so good. If people want information, I know there was a telephone drive a couple of weeks ago, and if people want information, they should really look, they could go to the MTA website, Massachusetts Teachers Association website, you get lots of information there. But it's not, we shouldn't be feeling that we don't care about all our children if we don't give them this opportunity. I don't know what people are thinking. They're taking the money, it's coming from our community if we had one, a charter school. And when that money goes, we don't get that back, and they don't have to take everybody, which is, you know, what, public schools get such a rap. Public schools take everybody, and we do our very best to make sure that every single child who comes from a different, you know, academic perspective, that we give them what they need, and that's what we work towards. And we need every bit of the money that we are given to be able to have the people that we need to teach them. And anyone listening earlier tonight to, I'm so proud of Wilmington, the type of people, the caliber of people who we hire, and every year at this meeting, I love it because you listen to the colleges that those people have come from, you listen to their background information. We are, we're doing something right, because we are attracting some really talented teachers and staff coming to this school. So, I'll get off my high horse, but please, absolutely, there is no reason not to vote no against this question. Question two.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Where are folks in the audience, would you like to say anything?
I don't have too much more to add. I just really have to say, the concern comes from raising the cap and adding more charter schools, because charter schools are already there. You know, we pay $80,000 a year for Wilmington or so to charter schools now, but in the coming years as this passes, a charter school could open in Burlington, or Borekow, or Tewksbury, and that's going to change. So, even though we're, it's affecting us right now at this point, it could change in the future, and that's one of the fears with raising the gap.
Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. Anything else from the school committee? All right, with that, I will ask for a motion to adopt the Resolution Against Lifting the Cap. Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
So moved. Can I have a second? Mrs. Kane? All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Tristan, thank you very much.
I know that the MTA certainly appreciates the support, and I will report to the MTA as well as MASC and MASSS that you've taken this action, because I think they're actually tracking that for legislative purposes as well.
That's great. Thank you for that. Excellent. Thank you for joining us. If you'd like to attend the rest of our meeting, feel free, but if you feel like you need to go to, that's all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the audience and the input. You're welcome. All right, going back to our order here, we will go back to Item E, Personnel Report.
And I'm actually going to ask Mr. Giro to weigh in as well, and if you want to just kind of give a general overview. I think the one thing that I thought we should point out to the committee is in terms of the coding of the reasons that, when you see a position that says "open new," that does not mean it was a new, new position per se. That means that it was a position that was budgeted for, but it was vacant, so it was filled. The only positions that are new, that weren't included in the budget, are the ones that are marked "new hyphen added." And you will see that all of these positions are actually educational assistants that have been added due to services placed into the students' IEPs.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mullis?
Are these changes for all of last year, or for a certain period of time?
No, this is, these are changes from last year coming into this year. I know that the report's a little busy, but it's people transfer from one school to another school, and we have, we went through the budgeting process last year, we got some new positions we added, so those are included in here. So, anyone that we hired, people resign, retire, and so forth, the replacements of those people as well. So, it's going from FY '16 into FY '17.
Is it always, I mean, just comparing from year to year, how does this compare as far as the changes and?
There's always a fair amount of changes year to year. This might be a little bit larger, but you always have teachers that resign, or retire, or move on to a different district and so forth, so. You know, there's a lot of movement this year, just people going from one school to another, which was a little bit more than probably prior years, but, and that's why the report looks longer, because I kind of, you know, added that in here as well.
Thanks, Paul.
Mrs. Kane?
Could I just ask, do all the CTLs have the same, do they teach classes and have the same, like, teach three classes and have four to be?
Yes, they all have the same teaching mode, and, yes, so point six teacher, point four CTL.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to add a couple things on to the Personnel Report, and I think they may be in here, but I just wanted to add that, and you may have noticed, that we had, last year, we had left the position of K-12 STEM Coordinator vacant. And I think where we are today, knowing that there's brand-new science standards that have been implemented, and then where we'd like to be with respect to STEM education in this district, we felt that we didn't want to leave that position vacant for any more time. So, we did fill the position, and we hired Lisa Ippolito as our K-12 STEM Coordinator. We are not going to fill the elementary math coordinator position that she held, her title as K-12 STEM, the M obviously being math. So, she will continue to support math as well as science and technology engineering. And she is very excited and has hit the ground sprinting, I would say. So, we're happy to have her in that position. I also wanted to point out that last year, the position of Middle School Math Coach was created. It was filled. This, the past year, you met Sandy Dival, she came and presented towards the end of the year as they were making some decisions about math and math, the enhanced math program. She left us at the end of the year, and it was certainly a challenge to fill the position. But in addition, because we are proceeding forward with the Envisions Math Program, and because of the level of PD and support those teachers are receiving, and Lisa Ippolito's involvement in the rollout, as well as the CTL, Bill Manchester's role in the rollout of Envisions Math and the way that that math program is supported, we did not feel that that was the highest priority need at the middle school. Instead, what we've been finding, a true need for is a middle school team chair. So, we are intending to shift or restructure, and instead of filling the math, middle school math coach position, fill middle school team chair position. That position has been posted. They are in the process, or beginning in the process, to recruit to fill that position. What that would allow us to do is to align the team chairs. As Mrs. Mahan mentioned today, Mrs. Anderson, Gina Anderson, is going to be at the Boutwell, Shawshene, and West. The team chair that replaces Mary Ellen Madden will be at the Wildwood, Reuben Street and North, which creates some nice alignment, because that's how students transition. And then there'll be a full-time middle school math, middle school team chair, and Dan Miller is currently the middle, the full-time high school team chair. So, this will allow us to really provide consistent and aligned team chair services throughout the district, and without having a budgetary impact, because we're using the funding from one position for that other position. And I think that's it. I just wanted to give those updates for that.
Mrs. Kane?
Could I just put in a request? As I look down this, there are so many new, well, they're probably not new, there's so many special, types of special ed courses. Could we have a list of?
Of the programs?
The program, what the program is and how many we have?
Sure.
That would be really helpful, because I'm looking, and I'm going, I have no idea what that one is.
To the sheet you gave us for the acronyms. I refer to that every time, so that would be hugely helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the Personnel Report? No? Great. Moving right along. Next up, Item F, Athletic Summer Camps.
I'm going to ask Mr. Giro to update you on the, this is an update more on the participation and financial standing of the program.
Thank you. This past summer, we finished our eighth year of the Athletic Summer Programs. We had over 481 children participate in the 11 camps. They brought in revenue over $80,000 and a net profit of a little over $36,000, and that goes into our athletic revolving fund, revolving account. Ed Harrison ran them this year for the last time, essentially, with Kevin Welch. And Tim Alberts, our new athletic director, got a education by fire, I guess. He started July 1st, right, and as these were going on, so. Again, it was, the camps were very successful. The kids, the families seemed to really enjoy it, and it's run very, very well by Eddie and Kevin, and I think it's, it's a good thing to have for the town of Wilmington.
I will say, just, my daughter has participated, I think this was her third year doing the field hockey camp, loved it. An inexpensive camp option for children in this community. They get to know the high school kids, they get to know the coaches. We're utilizing our resources, our buildings, our field spaces, so I would love to see these continue in perpetuity, because they're great, great programs. Any other questions, comments? This way. Mr. Mullis and Mrs. Burns?
I just wanted to say that, you know, the past few years, we've seen an increase in revenue and profit, and these camps have been well-attended, and I think every year we add new sports to them. So, I think this is a great program, both for the kids and for the school system, getting, you know, the additional revenue. So, let's, let's continue these and continue growing them.
Great. Mrs. Burns?
Kind of stems off what Mr. Mullis just said. When you say modifications and betterments, is that, does that mean either adding more classes of the same sport, or, I was just kind of curious as to what?
Yeah, they always look at the program. This year, we added a sport. We added, I think it was track this year that we didn't have last year. So, they'll look at, you know, adding some different sports to get more kids to participate. They might like, you know, certain things. I think it runs for around seven weeks, so there's not, it's tucked, and we doubled up some weeks with two camps going at the same time, so that's what we mean by kind of looking at that.
I was just curious.
And, you know, looking at different activities in a camp for the kids to do, so.
Great. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Do we have any issues getting high school kids to participate, or has it been pretty easy?
I haven't heard any issue with getting high school coaches to, you're talking?
Volunteers.
To volunteer, yeah, to volunteer. Some get paid, some get community service, some just volunteer. So, yeah, we've had no issues that I'm aware of. We've been, we've had enough coaches to.
That's a great program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnich?
My son's a volunteer at that camp, and he and a lot of his friends do the basketball camp, and he's done the football camp as well. They love doing it. They get a lot of volunteer hours, and, or they can get paid, so it's a nice option.
Yeah, great. I love that program.
I would think at this point, we have alumni, now being the high school coaches, the alumni of the programs themselves, now that they've been around for a while, so that's great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments about that? Okay, we're moving on to Item G, the Later Start Working Group. Turn it over to Superintendent Tulli.
Yes, as you probably will recall, last spring, the committee endorsed our son's Yes, as you probably will recall, last spring, the committee endorsed our signing on to a joint statement with other middle sex league communities to support investigating and possibly implementing later high school start times. Although I think our investigation will probably be, include not just high school, but also middle school start times, since that has been an issue. As, at least it's been raised to me as an issue of, of concern throughout the community. So I think the best way to proceed with our work, and we have a couple of years, the commitment was that we would try to implement for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, and the start time would be somewhere between eight and eight-thirty a.m. So we would be looking at having to essentially realign the start times of all the schools. And essentially, I would expect that, obviously, the elementary schools would start a little bit earlier, and the secondary schools would start a little bit later to align to this. So in order to surface all of the issues and brainstorm all of the possible solutions and what the obstacles are, I think the best way to proceed is to convene a group of constituents and stakeholders to help us identify the obstacles and identify potential solutions, so that we can then bring that forward, a set of recommendations to the school committee, as well as whatever budgetary implications might come along with those potential recommendations. So I would like to suggest that, uh, what I'm suggesting is that we create basically an advisory committee, a working group. Uh, and it would consist of a number of constituents. There would be a member of the school committee, myself as well. I would ask that to, obviously, to have the Director of Finance Administration on it. I think because it impacts athletics and extracurricular activities, I have the Director of Athletics, P.E. and Health on there as well. Uh, we would have three building administrators, one from each level, high school, middle school, elementary. A representative of the guidance department, whether that be the guidance CTL or guidance counselor. Three teachers, again, one from each level. Two students, one from the middle level and one from the high school level. Three parents, one from each level. And a member of the police department and a member of the business community. So this would bring us to a total of eighteen members. It's definitely a large group, but it's, I think, a manageable group. And it would give us that cross-section of stakeholder input that I think would be really important for identifying all of the obstacles and all of the various recommendations that the group could probably work on to surface. So we'd look to hold monthly meetings on a regular basis. And we would post the agendas as well as the minutes on our website, so Pete, the public could stay aware of the, the discussions and deliberations of that committee and the recommendations that would be made. Provide regular updates to the school committee through either the school committee representative or the superintendent. And again, our goal would be to make recommendations to the school committee sometime in June of two thousand seventeen. That would allow us to incorporate any budgetary needs, any funding requests in the budget for the FY nineteen budget, which that process would begin, obviously, in earnest in the, um, the fall of two thousand seventeen.
Mrs. Burns.
I know this discussion will come up, and I know, and this is kind of putting the crap before the horse, but I think along with the high school piece, there's going to be a lot of push to find out what about the middle school.
Correct.
And so is that going to be taken in conjunction to, together?
So it's really a later start, school start, working, so it's both middle school and high school.
Okay.
But also we want the elementary representation as well.
Of course.
Because it may mean that, you know, the elementary schools, which historically have started between eight and nine, would start more between seven forty-five and eight fifteen, to allow us to do this with the, as minimal as possible impact on transportation. If you constrain that window that we currently have, that typically means adding more buses. So I think there's a lot of different factors. But absolutely, I think that we would be looking at elementary starting first, and whether it was middle school, high school, or high school, middle school, it's done both ways in different districts. But certainly having that much later than the current seven twenty for the middle school and seven forty for the high school.
Would, would it be possible, though, maybe at a midway point, kind of just bringing the committee up to, um, up to par, where the committee is at that point?
So that, yeah, we could certainly, I mean, there's a couple of options. As I mentioned, we would have regular updates provided to the school committee through the representative to the school committee. Or from the superintendent. If the committee felt that at a midpoint, you wanted to bring the whole committee, and we could certainly do that as well.
No, I'm sorry, you did say that, I apologize.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. I think it would be helpful and perhaps efficient if we considered a school committee member this evening. If people are ready to do that, I had one person raise their hand, Mrs. Kane. Is there anyone else that is interested and like to be considered, or?
I mean, since I'm not in any, any other committees, you know, and I would have a time at night, because it would be done at night. You know, I'd be available for that.
Okay. Mrs. Kane.
That sounds good, because I only put my name, I said.
As if, right, if somebody else.
If we had nobody else, I definitely would do it. But if we have somebody else, I definitely would give it up.
You would definitely give it up? Okay, so Mr. Talbot is raising his hand. Anybody have any issues with Mr. Talbot representing us on this committee? No, I don't think so. Guess what?
Congratulations.
It's all yours. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering or being coerced. That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is item H, discussion of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, superintendent goals.
Yes, I have provided my draft goals to you. I know it doesn't say draft, but these are draft goals. And for discussion purposes, technically, the vote of the school committee on the superintendent's plan occurs, is scheduled to occur on October twelfth. But I did want to give plenty of opportunity to advance opportunity for the committee to review. It's rather lengthy, obviously. And if there's any feedback that the committee has to offer for me to consider in the development of these goals, certainly happy to hear and listen to that feedback.
Mrs. Burns.
There was two, I, two aspects that I kind of wanted to touch upon. The first one is in the standard, uh, the first go, uh, standard three, family and community engagement. Hang on, no, am I right? Yeah. I'm sorry. Trying to get myself, oh, excuse me, the last one, forgive me. Professional culture. I think with regards to, um, the second action, utilize the collective bargaining process for a successor contract to engage in collaborative problem-solving and strengthening relationships. Does that surround, is that in line with the negotiations that we will be entering in with the teachers?
That's correct. This is the, um, we're currently in the third year of the three-year contract. So we would begin and commence negotiations probably in December with discussions of, of ground rules and such. But then the negotiating team would begin to, to meet, uh, the joint labor management negotiating team would begin to meet in December or January timeframe, I think is what typically you've done here in Long.
Right, I, I was just, I guess I'm just curious. We've always had a good rapport in negotiating contracts with the teachers. So I was, I guess I'm kind of a little, um, curious as to where that action stems, stems from, I guess? I mean, we've, we have, I mean, if I, we've always had, we've always done well negotiating with the teachers, and it's been very respectful and professional. So I was just kind of trying to see if there was more to that action.
We've had discussions with the WTA in the past about, um, down the road, looking at more of a, an interest-based bargaining model, which is a little bit different than traditional bargaining. And I think there were some reticence, because as a superintendent, they have not yet bargained with me using traditional methods. But I think that many of the negotiations that we've had over things, for example, like student impact ratings, we've actually used more of an interest-based bargaining process. So this is kind of more evolving us in that direction, so that instead of, um, perhaps something traditional, where both sides come in with a proposal, that there's more time spent discussing what are, what are the mutual interests that we share? And how are those interests maybe not being met or addressed within the current collective bargaining agreement? And how can we address those and work through solu, solutions collaboratively versus what traditionally is seen as an adversarial? And it may be very respectful, I agree, but it's still at what's known as adversarial bargaining in that you, uh, one side has its positions and another side has its positions. And then they come together and try to create some common ground versus trying to create that common ground in advance and, and develop some of those solutions collaboratively together. So that's the direction that I think both parties are looking to go.
You want to avoid that adversarial piece that could develop.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha, I just wanted.
And I think anytime you sit down with, uh, the, one of the professional associations that we have, and we do have very respectful relationships, but I think it's always an opportunity to make those relationships even stronger, because you have the ability to really begin to articulate what's working well, what isn't working well, and how can we work together to come up with mutual solutions that just do strengthen those working relationships.
All right, um, and then the other thing is, I was just curious about, I know we've discussed this, and you've been gracious enough to give me your view, is, um, I know last year, we, I, was it last year's, um, superintendent goals, you were focused on closing the gap piece. I know that, that we still have that gap, that we still work, and I think that's going to be an ongoing work in progress. I was, I'd like to, we discussed about, I'd like to see, um, and, and again, more involvement in the curriculum piece. And I know you have been with regards to supporting the different departments and, and bringing in, um, other aspects. But I, I think, um, trying to go, I've gone over briefly the, the rubrics of the superintendent's evaluation, and I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm just putting it out there. I didn't know how this could develop. I think, you know, our, we're in the business of learning. And, um, and I'm wondering, I guess, if there's, um, more ways, that, in that realm, I could, I, I could see clearer, clearer in your goals. Do you know what I, in your goals, you know what I mean? I, I know that, I'm not articulating it as well as I think I, I've done previously, but I know, you know, Mr. Gallagher is here, and he's going to drive, he's going to work with team, the team leaders and drive that piece. But I'm just trying to see if, if there's a role, and I don't know what that would look like. I don't know if, if it's even a feasible idea, that you could use to incorporate in your personal goal with regards to either driving curriculum or, you know, I, I, I don't, it's, it's a very generalized statement. I mean.
So it may, it might be helpful to kind of walk through what the process is for goal development according to the educator evaluation system. So typically, what happens is superintendent will go through the superintendent's rubric and identify those standards, indicators and elements where the committee in the past has rated the individual proficient or exemplary, where they've been rated needs improvement, and where, from a self-assessment perspective, the superintendent feels that they would like to grow. And it may not necessarily be, um, rating yourself as needs improvement. It could be proficient and you'd like to move to exemplary. So the first step in the process is, I went through the rubric, I went through all of your evaluations from last year. And in the instructional leadership domain, uh, which is where, and there's, you know, out of the thirty-two elements in the superintendent's rubric, there's only one element that actually refers to curriculum. There is one on curriculum, there's one on instruction, there's one on evaluation, data, informed decision-making. There's, and, and there's one on assessment that falls under instructional leadership. So my own self-assessment, as well as the committee's self-assessment, uh, the ratings in that area were, were proficient. So what I did was, through the self-assessment process, focus on those particular indicators and elements where either I assessed that I was needs improvement and wanted to move to proficient, or from proficient to exemplary, or areas where the school committee had identified that I was, uh, needs and needs of improvement. And, you know, needs improvement, sometimes you think of it pejorative. I interpret it as, you feel that that's an area of growth for me. So I focused on those areas of growth, and I developed these particular goals from that perspective to focus on the areas of growth. The other piece we look at is the, the, the data and the evidence of student learning. The committee has been generous in its acknowledgement that MCAS is not the be-all and the end-all, and that what we should focus on are the actions that are going to improve climate, culture and instruction versus just focusing on, uh, closing the gap. So, uh, in that vein, what I did was looked at, what are those actions that I, as superintendent, in my role as a leader in supporting those who are actually on the ground, you know, really impacting instruction on a day-to-day basis? What can I do to support that work and not have it be tied to a particular CPI number, a particular, you know, percent of proficient or advanced? So that was the process that was used to develop that. So, um, there's a lot of work going on in curriculum. I have a lot of involvement in that through my regular meetings with Sean, through my leadership of the district leadership meetings. It's not, obviously, the role of the superintendent to lead the development of curriculum, but to support those who are leading that and to provide them with the resources. Similar to the way, it's not necessarily the role of the superintendent to develop the line item budget, but to support, you know, the finance person in doing that. So I think a lot of what's in here and a lot of what happens on a day-to-day basis, there is a lot of support for the work that's being done. But I think it's also important to realize that there are thirty-two indicators and elements in that rubric. Only one of those thirty-two is curriculum. And really, the curriculum leader, instructional leader of the district, is the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction. So my job is to pave the road for him to be as effective as possible in leading that work.
So would it be safe to say, then, in, in that realm that you've just stated, that, that would still apply to closing the gap, because by doing such would suffice to have a better student achievement turnout, correct?
If you look at the district's strategic plan, particularly at stand, uh, strategic objective two, which is ensuring equity and excellence, I think you'll see the roadmap that we've laid out for how we're going to ensure excellence and equity in instruction. And, and closing the gap is part of that equity piece, but also the excellent piece, excellence. And if you look at that, things like having strong curriculum documents in place, curriculum maps, pacing guides, scoping sequence, that, if you look at the strategic plan, the person who's responsible for that in the district's strategic plan that we've all endorsed and that the committee has approved, that is delegated to the role of assistant superintendent. The role that I have as superintendent is to build the leadership capacity of those who are leading that work, those who are designated to do that work. And so that's, that's the direction that, that we've set through the strategic plan, and that's exactly what we're kind of laying out as our goal. So I think when you see the district improvement goals, which will be a compendium of the district improvement goals that are submitted by Sean and Paul and Anne Marie, I think you'll see that alignment to the strategic plan, and you'll be able to very clearly identify who is responsible for what when it comes to things like, you know, strong curriculum documents and the alignment between curriculum and instructional practice, and the work to elevate instructional practice, focus on twenty-first century skills, and all the other things that are part of that standard two, that strategic objective two in the plan. But I think if you look at that, you'll see that most, most of that work is led in the plan by the assistant superintendent. So I'm just feeling very thankful and blessed that we have such a strong person in that role to carry that work forward.
All right, thank you very much.
Great, Mrs. Kane.
I guess to piggyback on what MJ's saying, um, I know this is because I was a teacher, and I'm, and I'm always cognizant of what's going on with the teachers, because it doesn't matter what you do. If you haven't got them behind you and working with you to do these things, um, it's not going to work. And I was thinking when I was going through this earlier, that I wish there was some way, because I know you contact, you, you're in contact with the teachers and they're part of the process. But we always hear about the administrators and what they've been doing and going to, and I haven't heard a lot about the teachers. So I was wondering if there's some way to, to add in somewhere that this affects the teachers? Do you know what I'm trying to say? I, I know it's happening, I just, it's not getting.
Yeah, I think.
Translated here.
But that's not really my role. My role is not to, uh, to lead teachers. My role is to lead the district and school leaders, who then will lead the teachers. So I think what you will see is, when you see school improvement plans, uh, that's where you'll see the teacher piece, because those school improvement plans are developed by the school leaders. And that's where you, and that, again, that's where you get the alignment up through the district as well. And when I see administrator goals, those goals, the same way that you're seeing the development of leadership. those goals, the same way that you're seeing the development of leadership capacity, at my level with the leadership team, you'll see principals who are looking to develop the leadership capacity and support the work of the teachers in doing the curriculum alignment, in learning the instructional strategies, you'll see their goals are going to be very much focused this year, for example, at the elementary level, at supporting teachers with the implementation of readers workshop. And we have the job embedded coaching going on right now, actually, we we've both been at schools and had the opportunity to see TLA in action, modeling and coaching teachers. And that's something we're doing, and you'll see that as a goal, principals supporting teachers in doing that work, um, supporting print, uh, teachers in, uh, actually also supporting their schools in developing innovative schedules so that they create more common planning time, and also the proposal that we have right now for teachers to be able to meet as PLC groups after school. Those are all things that building principals will support, which will give the time and the support to teachers.
Okay, and another question I always wanted to know, uh, you know how the, um, in the, the reports we get from the individual schools, and then I saw it in here, when you come up with like a seventy-five percent success rate or fifty percent success, or the teachers are usually even lower than that, where where does that come from, that percentage? Is there an, I don't know if it's, I guess it's useful, but it makes me think almost a hundred percentage is say up there, and then we work for over three years to get to the hundred percent, but I know that's not how it goes, but I'm wondering.
That, I mean, that's a great question. For, take for example, um, the, um, I'm trying to find one of the first occurrences of the percent. So in the student learning goal, um, instructional leadership, developing learning leaders, uh, at least fifty percent of staff will agree or strongly agree that building administrators provided effective feedback on how to differentiate instruction for students. We have a survey that we've, we did last year and will continue to do of staff about the role of administrators in providing effective support. And I know what the rating was this year, and I know we'd like to improve upon that rating, and I think by including them in activities like instructional rounds and by im- improving on the professional development provided to principals so they can provide more effective feedback to teachers, the hope is that the survey responses that we get will indicate a stronger uh, percentage of teachers agreeing or strongly agreeing than perhaps in the past.
Excellent, okay, thank you. And um, I had one other thing, sorry. Oh, okay, it said at the bottom of the page, um, professional practice goals standard three, at the very bottom of the corner, it says administrators will be able to articulate and utilize at least four new strategies for building consensus, resolving conflict, and responding to agreement. Is that referring to conflicts and consensus among staff, among teachers, kids, students to the teachers?
This is building consensus amongst particularly the the s- the teachers, the staff, as well as parents and communities. So whenever there's an issue, there might be an issue about uh, homework, or there might be, and if there is disagreement about homework and the type of homework and amount of homework, giving uh, principals strategies to be able to work through those conflicts and successfully bring those matters to resolution. Might be at a building level where there might be, you know, disagreement about a particular plan for implementing a certain initiative and being able to have strategies for how to work through when people don't disagree, but trying to get to an end where we come up with a mutually agreeable resolution to the problem.
I guess because putting it that way, it makes me think, oh dear, are we having conflicts all over the system? But I think this is just a new way to go.
I mean, there's always disagreement, there's always, whenever you get five people in a room and and propose some way to do something, not, not, people are not always going to agree on the best way to approach it. So the more tools you have in your tool belt for how you try to build consensus on the front end ideally, but if that doesn't happen and and there is some disagreement, how do you effectively deal with that disagreement?
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other, Mr. Mullis?
Yeah, I have a general question. Um, on a lot of these action items, part of the evidence are uh, surveys on on quite a few of these. I just want to, um, as as part of the school committee, will we have access to see the survey responses on these surveys?
Absolutely. There's, in terms of the surveys that I do for myself, or we do of the community, I mean, the only surveys that I wouldn't necessarily share are the uh, surveys that administrators do of their staff, because it's part of their evaluation process. But anything that I do for myself, or anything we do for parents and community members, or surveys around district initiatives or district programs, there's absolutely no reason why. I'm typ- typically like to report out the results of those surveys to see where we are, particularly when we have benchmarks in here about where we'd like to be.
Okay.
Does that, would that include the responses in their entirety?
Uh, well, I mean, typically the surveys are on a Likert scale, agree, strongly agree, disagree, so yeah, you would see all those responses.
Thank you.
Can I have another simple question? Um, with professional culture, can I ask you, um, I know that in, just a couple of them, support, um, support administration providing more opportunities for peer observation of staff and sharing of peer feedback, and you also note continue to support administration staff in expanding the practice of using PLC strategies to facilitate collaborative among staff. Um, can can I ask you, how how will you, how will you continue to support them, by by what measures? Is there any particular elements that you'll be adding to, especially the PLCs which you've started?
Yep.
That will expand, um, that previous goal? I I'm just curious as to what that support will look like in in the coming year.
Yeah, there's a number of things that we've done and that we'll continue to do. Um, at the elementary level, we've provided support in the form of consultation and consulting around scheduling so that they can revamp their schedules and pre-up teachers to be able to spend time in classrooms observing their peers. We've also expanded our instructional rounds, for example, so that we don't, it's no longer just administrators, but in every building when we do our instructional rounds, we always invite staff members. And last year, we had at least one staff member at each school that joined us, sometimes more than that. And so we've invited principals to invite more staff members to participate in that so that they can have that peer observation. Yeah, a- another example is through the work that we're doing with TLA. For example, what we've seen happening over the last several days as they've done their first round of coaching, um, that support is really financial support and the support to um, have the subs in place and have sufficient subs in place. But all of the teachers at a particular grade level in each school, like today, I was at the north, and in the morning, all of the fifth grade teachers participated in the training, they all observed TLA, um, doing the lessons in a classroom, and then they observe, over the course of the year, they observed their peers doing those lessons. So providing that financial support and that um, support through substitutes to allow them to do that. We also do a lot of work modeling the use of PLCs and PLC strategies. We use them in almost all of our meetings, we encourage, um, building administrators to do that in their buildings, uh, when they want to try new strategies, PLC strategies, and they might, um, still be learning them, we offer to come out and help them facilitate and run those meetings. Um, and we continue to provide PD, so last year, two years ago, we trained a cohort of thirty administrators and staff in PLC strategies. We had a second cohort this past year, so we're up to sixty staff members, and we're going to have another cohort in June of this year as well. So a third of our staff will have been professionally trained. That's really, um, proven successful because with the PLC proposal we have right now for the elementary teachers to meet as a PLC team once a month, um, in addition to the staff meeting, they actually requested as part of the agreement that those meetings be led by PLC-trained facilitators where available. So they even see the benefit of having a trained facilitator to promote that collaboration and the peer interaction learning from one another.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, so this is, this is actually the second time we have s- seen these goals. We also, um, took a a quick look at them at our retreat in the end of August. And if I heard you correctly, we will be taking a vote on accepting these goals. Uh, we will be taking that vote on October twelfth.
Correct.
Okay, so we still have a, you have some time to think about it, it's a lot of information here, think about it, ask questions. Okay? Any other questions at this point? All right, moving right along. The next item is item J, and that's the school committee, self-evaluation. And Mary was kind enough to pull together for us the survey questions that we used last year, and she has provided the template that we used. Um, so I guess I would ask of the committee, what did we think of using this as a tool? Are there things that you would like to add or change or remove? And then the bigger question is, if we do it, are we going to act on any findings? So any, Mrs. Bonnish?
I just had one, um, observation. Um, I I I was actually starting to just fill it out to see.
To see where you were at.
And the the answers are are just so generic as far as, like, to me, strongly agree and agree is the same thing, unless you strongly agree means a hundred percent of the time, this is what I think, and agree is eighty percent of the time.
As opposed to somewhat?
Yeah, I don't know, it just, and then it goes right down to disagree. I don't know, what do you got, I mean, what do people think about?
Yeah, it's a reasonable point.
Maybe adding, I mean, I know this was something maybe that you found that was already there.
Yeah, this was the, I found it on the MASC, um, self-evaluation, so you can certainly improve upon what they put out there. I didn't mean that to say you could, I'm, you're free to do that.
Right.
It wasn't a judgment.
Absolutely, Miss Toppett.
Uh, maybe instead of saying don't know, maybe like NA or something like that?
Because it doesn't, right, it's not that you don't know, it's that it doesn't apply to our work that we do.
Yeah, something along those lines.
Yeah, and one of the things that we found in surveys is, um, and, you know, just as a point of information, I think a lot of times we do surveys and we give people the sort of neutral option or the the opt-out option to not answer. So, uh, I know that as I'm doing surveys moving forward, I'm kind of eliminating that don't know, neutral type option because I think in some ways you kind of have to force people to make a decision, make a stand, yeah, exactly, so.
It's hard, I feel like I'm watching a tennis game here. Mrs. Kane.
I was just going to say, one of the things that as we look at this, um, for instance, the committee members take part in educational workshops and conferences to help them make informed decisions. Well, some of us are able to get to the the conference that we have, and some of us are never going to be able to get to the conference that we have. And some of us are able to get to nighttime things, and some of us are never going to be able to get to nighttime things. So that one I found, I I'm not sure we all realize it, and I don't know if we should even have that question, but that one, I don't know how we would put strongly agree, agree, because maybe five of us can do it, two can't, six of us can do it, one can't, you know, it's.
What, what number is that?
It's the last one above, right before operations on the second, second page.
Yeah, it's in the back of it.
It's on the back of the first page.
Yeah, I see, yep, sorry.
Because I find some of these questions, that's the problem, that maybe it's some of us, but not all of us.
Right, and there's only seven of us, so.
And we're all volunteers.
Right, and we are all volunteers, good point, good point. How do we want to approach this then? Do we want to, I'm going to raise the issue again, another little subcommittee to take a look at it and then present a recommendation? Does one person want to take ownership of it and try to put together some changes? Mrs. Burns.
I don't mind being a part of this, um, committee, if we can meet in the evenings, um, or if Monday and Fridays work best for anybody, I don't mind. I think what I'd like to see maybe, and throwing it out there since it's kind of, uh, just popped in my head, maybe looking at the questions and editing or revamping, um, the questions, I don't mind coming up with a word doc, for lack of a better term, um, of something that would be beneficial, I mean, we could take this as a, a model, um, find out which which questions would be the most impactful to us. Like for, um, instance, Mrs. Kane's reference to the the workshops piece. Um, I don't, and maybe you don't even come up maybe with other thoughts that may be, uh, more applicable. Um, but I don't mind, I don't mind being on that committee, if perhaps we can meet on Mondays or Fridays or in the evening, um, just to throw that out.
Mrs. Kane.
I have one other question. Is, I don't remember this, is this the same one we did last year?
This is the same one we did last year, we did it in October of last year, and we we simply all took the survey, I was the one who reported out the results, but again, there's only seven of us. Um, we didn't really have too much, there wasn't too much discrepancy or anything like that, so we didn't act on anything.
Right.
Um, I don't know.
We can also do something where, um, like an efficiency piece, I don't know, I I'm just thinking. I'm not thinking completely, but I'm, you know, I I don't know, I mean, just as a thought process for people to think about.
So, since you raised your hand, I'm going to pick on you.
Okay.
Um, do you, do you want to take a stab at it? Would you volunteer to take a stab at at maybe some of these questions solo? And then all of us can submit ideas to you, and you could come up with a a word doc or something, share out with the group, and then we say, we discuss it further?
I'd be, I'd be happy to have a colleague to run, throw thoughts off of. I'd be happy to take it on by myself, but I would think I feel most comfortable if I had someone to kind of share the thought process, to think it out, talk it out, kind of thing. But I'd be, I'd be happy to at least get get it started so we can kind of continue the process.
Okay. Anybody else want to raise their hand? Can they do anything at night? Everybody's quiet. Mr. Mullis?
You can do it on the phone, but.
Okay.
I can go to Vegas, we can do it at Vegas, on his trip, I don't mind going to Chicago.
I'd be happy to help out on the phone.
That's, yeah, I mean, we don't have to make it a difficult thing.
That'd be fine.
We can Skype.
Okay.
There you go, okay. Okay, Mr. Mullis and Mrs. Burns.
Thank you, Manny.
Any other discussion or thoughts? Mrs. Bonnish?
Just for me, I I I do like the questions, I, for the most part, I think it's a good survey, I just don't love the answers.
Okay.
And, you know, whatever people want to add or take away, I, but I do like the, I think the questions are applicable, so.
Do you think there maybe should be more areas to have comments on the questions? I think that's the only thing that I saw that that, because it, some of the answers, I mean, you may have a comment, even a one-sentence comment.
Yeah, so adding a field, more fields for comments.
Yeah.
Right, so it's, the way it's asked, again, please provide comments for any question where disagree was selected, but the fact is you might want to provide a comment even if you didn't disagree, right.
Yeah, it's positive.
Sure.
This is my input right here.
So noted, that's fabulous.
If there's anything that, um, do you guys want to take a little time to think if there's anything that you think of that may not be on this that may be an area? I mean, I just, I mean, not right now, but a crunch on it, and.
I think that's reasonable.
All right, so what I'll do is I'll set up my word document as, as as this is now, um, I'll change it to agree, somewhat agree, disagree, don't know, is that, would be the, I mean, you'll have time to think about it, though.
The don't know is the kind of.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Not applicable.
Not applicable, because it just doesn't seem to fit our work.
Why are we going to have any questions on here that that one of us would answer NA, though?
Well.
Just eliminate the question if it's something.
I'm sorry, what was your?
If this is for, applicable to all of us, why would any of the questions, any one of us hit NA? I mean, I understand the don't know, like, for instance, if you were to join the, the committee, uh, last month, the election was last month, you just joined, you took this, maybe you don't know that we have a mission statement, maybe you don't know how often we regularly evaluate. So I think don't know has some value, I don't think NA should have value. That's my, just my personal opinion.
I know I answered don't know last year, a couple. I might have, yeah, I might have.
It would all apply.
It should.
It would, you know what I mean?
If we're doing this right.
Right, 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 right.
It sounds like you're just looking for different additional shades of gray, if you want strongly agree.
One more shade.
Strongly agree, agree, somewhat agree, disagree, and strongly disagree?
I think her, I think Jenny's original point was that agree is strongly agree should be one, and then maybe a somewhat agree.
Right.
And then a somewhat disagree.
And then a disagree, and then.
And I'm pissed about it. Probably just get beat.
Do we have that capability, WC TV? Okay, any, any more discussion? Any, any more discussion on school committee self-evaluation? No, we're good? Okay, let's move on. Public comment. Crickets. Crickets. Okay. No public comment. Other reports, subcommittee reports. I know we're new to the year, but Mrs. Bonnich?
I was just going to bring up the facility master plan meeting is tomorrow night at seven, and I think it would be helpful if as many of us were there because they're talking about very important things right now. It's at seven o'clock and it's in this room.
Just as an FYI, we are planning to do an episode, WCTV episode of In the Loop as well, focused on the school options that are being evaluated by the CECL group. Jeff Hall, our town manager, has agreed to participate in that episode to talk about the facility master plan generally and what the intent of the plan is and how that plan would be effectuated. And then we also plan to invite Will Harriman, who is the educational consultant working on that as well. And that between the three of us, we can help educate the community on the various options. And so I think the more we can do to get the word out to people about what is being discussed, particularly around grade reconfiguration, I think the better, I think the better the discussions will be long-term and the more people will be able to weigh in on those things.
Mrs. Kane?
I think also that I'm, I'm planning to attend tomorrow night, but I think also at some point, we are going to have to make a decision on major things as far as the schools and what we're going to do at the schools. And so it seems to me the better, the more we can have background information going through these meetings, the better off we're going to be trying to make the decision. And I was really impressed the other night with the, the Board of Selectmen, they went right down the board and everybody told what, where they stood and what they were thinking. And we haven't done that and I'm not sure I could do that at this point. So I, I think it's really important, as many of these meetings, they're always the third Thursday. They're always the third Thursday of the month.
That's the scheduled time, yeah. And we did have, though, we had CECL group and Harriman come and they presented on the eight different school options. And I think everybody did provide commentary on the ones that they didn't feel were worth CECL group's time to evaluate and which ones they should continue to evaluate. And so they feel that at this point, and I think that the committee had felt that the school committee, so if that's not the case, I guess there might need to be more discussion. They felt that the school committee had been provided the opportunity to select the options that CECL group and will be evaluating moving forward. No, this is, the plan's not going to result in any decisions being made, it's going to result in, these are the different options that we've looked at. So if there are other options that people feel or you don't think that you've had sufficient input into the options that, that CECL presented, I think, you know, we might want to figure that out because they're ready to go. They've taken the school options that you all discussed as being the ones that they're going to evaluate and those are the ones that they're going to run with moving forward. The reason why the Board of Selectmen had that lengthy discussion was there were so, we had eight options to look at. They had something like, it seemed like forty options to look at by the time you had the different permutations and combinations of things on one site or different sites. We just essentially had these eight options. So I think we narrowed it down to four options and those are the ones that they're going to evaluate moving forward.
I think the more educated we are on whatever those four are to make the decision, I think it's going to be a really difficult decision. That's just my point of view.
Yeah, they, that, once they finish their evaluation of those options, they will present their findings. This is how much it would cost, this is the feasibility, viability, this would be the issues that you would deal with. And at that point, yes, I think what ends up going into the final, what gets translated into the capital plan, which would really be the funding and voting mechanism, yes, obviously, there would be school committee weighing in on that, voting on that, Board of Selectmen, ultimately, I think the community, obviously, because funding would be involved with making those decisions. So I think we're a ways out from that. I think right now the timeline calls for the presentation of the results to happen in the spring, prepping for a presentation into the town meeting. That would not be any, there's no anticipated action to my knowledge that would happen at town meeting, just a presentation of the facility master plan and what they came up with as evaluation of those options and recommendations.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other subcommittee reports? I know we're right at the beginning of the school year. Mrs. Burns?
I just wanted to bring forth that we discussed about, talking about next year's budget, would like to have a conversation with both of our representatives with regards to what their projections are at this point for fiscal year eighteen. I know it brought forth my point to Superintendent Delai and Julie had a wonderful idea about maybe having our representatives here along with the Board of Selectmen that we were going to possibly suggest that. But I think in order to kind of align ourselves up with what our needs will be and just open that discussion as to where, you know, the state is so that we can advocate for the needs of our community going forth and seeing where like the K grant and the, some of the innovation budgeting. I was just, wanted to bring that forth to you as to, and have a discussion with regards to what your thoughts are with regards to having them here in the district or if, if we should, you know, just to start discussing about what the matters at the state for the upcoming budget year. I'm not speaking as well as I'd like to articulate, but.
Superintendent Delai had shared with myself an idea that she took from her former district, actually calling it a legislative night where we would invite our legislative representatives to come before us at a school committee meeting and give a little presentation about what is going on at their level and giving us an opportunity to ask questions and share our concerns. I think we would, we would certainly invite Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, whoever else we deemed appropriate, and certainly have it be an open public meeting. I think that's a great idea and it would be a great way to involve all of us at once. Timing is a little bit tricky, I think, because right now our representatives are just getting back with the election pending. I think that's where their interests lie right now. So it's, it's looking at our calendar, what we have on our plate right now, which is quite a lot, and just finding timing. But I do like the idea of bringing them or inviting them to come to us. So just my thoughts. Anybody else have any questions?
I think it's a great idea.
I think other school districts have heard do something similar.
Would you like to proceed at this point then, see if superintendents would reach out to both Senator Tar and Representative Misselli and?
Representative Gorn.
And Representative Gorn, yeah.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Let them know what the hope of the committee is to do that and discuss with them what would be the best timing where they would have the most useful information to share with us that would then feed into our budget process and try to arrange with enough advance notice for them to be all here together.
Would you also then bring it forth to maybe Mr. Hall to bring it up at Board of Selectmen meeting or? I don't know how, how that would, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, when we did it in my former district, I think that there were, there were other opportunities. We invited the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee to come as well. We would focus, you know, just on the school issues like chapter seventy and grant funding and such. At least in, in reading, I know that the board also brought the legislative delegation in as well to talk about municipal and general government funding as well. But obviously, it's, everybody needs to be informed about all the different things happening. So by all means, we would open that up to, I think it would be best to open that up to all the other committees as well.
Very good. Great. Any other subcommittees that met over the summer by any chance? No. I think everybody needed a well-deserved break. All right. Correspondence. No correspondence.
I think it came to me because of last year.
Oh, sure.
So, is that?
Oh, yeah, we're going to have this on a future agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll hold, hold that for.
It said second notice on it, just to let you know.
Oh, it does.
I think they're looking for our names sooner.
November second.
Yeah. Oh, you got the first one.
Do we?
Yeah, probably the next meeting, but.
Yeah, we'll put it, we'll put it on the agenda for our next.
October twenty-first is the deadline.
Oh, yep.
The deadline's October twenty-first.
Okay. Okay.